Oh, I thought it was already on, sorry.
Hi, I'm Connor Perkins. I'm a team lead at the Martins here in Charlestown at 190 Flowing Springs Road. And we have been so happy to partner with you, the Jefferson County School District, with our Feeding School Kids Initiative. So since launching in 2021, we, the giant company and partnering communities, have been proud to raise over $7.5 million to help feed school kids in neighboring communities. We believe as a company that no child should have to worry about where their next meal is coming from. So in partnership with the community through rounding up at checkout or donating their choice points, we've been proud to raise $9,965.36 for the Jefferson County Board of Education. So, thank you, and thank you. Thank you to the community as well for helping us raise these funds. Thank you.
All right, next up we have student and staff recognitions, and I know we have at least three of those, right, Ms. Springer?
Good evening, President Skidmore, members of the board, and Dr. Bishop. This evening, our introductions will begin with a group of outstanding students from Washington High School who were selected for the West Virginia American Choral Directors Association All-State Choir. These talented vocal students were selected for their hard work, skill, and dedication to music. They had the opportunity to work with conductors and perform alongside the best student musicians from across the state. To celebrate this incredible achievement, I now invite Washington High School's choir director, Ken Cooper, to recognize each student by name.
We'll start with the all-state students. And we have Megan Brady, Amara Kason, Ashley Cockrum, Christine Larson, Alexa Stunts, Alexa Littleton, Peyton Day, Mason Bennett, Aiden Shiflett, Wyatt Talton, and Savannah Ahern. Plus six more that aren't here. Keep going, or are you coming back?
Next, we are excited to recognize the members of Washington High School's Camerata Chamber Choir for their outstanding achievement this school year. They earned the grand trophy at the Capital Sing Concert Choir Competition, were named grand champions at the Martinsburg American Classic, and took second place at the Festival of Choirs. Once again, invite Mr. Cooper to read their names.
So we have some duplicate students because many of our students are involved in everything they possibly can get involved in. So you'll hear some names again, but I will read them. Mason Bennett, Megan Brady, Ashley Cockrum, Jacob Cornell, Amon Day, Peyton Day, Christine Larson, Alexa Littleton, Jayden Reese, Aiden Shiflett, Joseph Stabs, Alexis Stunts, Wyatt Talton, Charlotte Ulrich, Adam Wykrikis. Please come up.
Finally, we are proud to recognize the members of Washington High School's Tenor Bass Choir for their success this year. The group earned first place in their division at Martinsburg American Classic to close out our Washington High School recognitions this evening, and once again invite Mr. Cooper to come forward and recognize his students.
So we have, again, some repeats, but a new name, Dominic Day, come up and join us. Amon Day, Peyton Day, and Aiden Shiflett, Joseph Stabs, Wyatt Talton, and Adam Wykrikis. And then all of these folders that are people that are not here today, tonight, but they'll get their folders tomorrow in class. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but it's really, really nice outside.
Next, we are proud to recognize some of our outstanding FCCLA leaders from Jefferson and Washington High Schools. These students brought home top honors at the West Virginia FCCLA Star Events this year and have earned the opportunity to compete at the National FCCLA Conference in Orlando this July. I now invite Ms. Heather Fabel to come forward to recognize each of these students and their incredible achievements.
It gives me great honor and pleasure to present to you the West Virginia State FCCLA President and West Virginia FCCLA State First Vice President, both from Jefferson County Schools, Derek Carper and Ava Richards. In addition to both of these students representing the state as your leadership for FCCLA this school year, they were also participants at the competitive events. Derek scored a gold medal in Career Investigation, and Ava Richards scored silver medal in Nutrition and Wellness. And both have qualified to go to the National Conference in Orlando in July. Additionally, we have four others that will be joining us, and unfortunately, they are trying to finish up a tennis match and racing here, but I don't think it's quite going to happen, but they are right outside on the tennis courts. And that are, those students are Hazel Hitt, Amanda Beza, and Lily Nicodemus, and they will be presenting the Chapter Service Project, and Noelle Nicodemus, who will be presenting the Public Policy Advocate. And all of those students did score with a gold medal. And Noelle Nicodemus, for the first time in history, scored a 100% perfect score at the state competition. So lots to be proud of here in Jefferson County.
Sure. Our last group of students to recognize, oh, no, you're right. And now really, we're ready to recognize our last group of students. Tonight, we're excited to recognize the outstanding students who were winners at the district, regional, and state levels of this year's Social Studies Fair. These students impressed judges and our community with their research and creativity with projects demonstrating curiosity, critical thinking, and a true passion for learning. We are also grateful for the leadership of Harpers Ferry Middle School teacher Allison Whitaker, who served as county Social Studies Fair Coordinator. She's unable to join us this evening, but Mr. Brian Bauer will now join us to recognize these exceptional students.
All right, we want to give some recognition to these students. These students placed in either the county, the regional, or the state Social Studies Fair. So from Charlestown Middle School, Lorena Bowers placed third place in the district. I'm sorry, third place in the district. From Harpers Ferry Middle School, Daphne Stephan, first place in the district, second place in the regional. Also from Harpers Ferry, Hazel Turner-Pow and Willow Prevettill, second place in the district. Keegan Bauer, first place in the district, third place in the regional. Amelia White, Addie Smith, Audrey Milner, and Emory Eastman, placed first place in the district and first place in regional. From Shepherdstown Middle School, Breslin and Harper McCoy placed first place in district and first place at the regional competition. Stella Van Hilst was first place for district, second place for regional. Caleb Rosado and Elena Bankhurst were third place in the district. From Wildwood Middle School, Shayla Clark, Colin Pearson, and McKenna Runyon, third place in the district. Also from Wildwood, Addison Webb, second place for the district, and Jillian Caprani, second place for the district. And finally, from Jefferson High School, Zoe Henderson, first place in the district, first place at regional. Zoe Cavell and Sarah Hall, first place at the district. Aiden Cunningham, first place in the district and first place regional. And finally, Annalise Bauer and Ally Hickman, first place in the district, second place at regional. Congratulations, everybody.
We're going to start this evening with Ms. Shana Bush, West Virginia Council of Teachers of Mathematics Middle School Math Teacher of the Year.
We are proud to recognize Shana Bush of Harpers Ferry Middle School, being named the West Virginia Council of Teachers of Mathematics Middle School Math Teacher of the Year. Ms. Bush makes a difference in many ways, including mentoring new teachers, helping students in need, securing grants for learning projects, and coaching track. As you can tell, she inspires students both academically and athletically, and we are excited to celebrate this well-deserved honor tonight.
Next, we have Ms. Allison McCully, National Society of High School Scholars Educators of Distinction Award. We are proud to recognize Allison McCully, who was selected for the National Society of High School Scholars Educators of Distinction Award. This national honor celebrates teachers who go above and beyond to inspire academic excellence and leadership in their students. Ms. McCully was nominated by her student Gavin Smith, whose life she has impacted in a meaningful way. While Gavin humbly declined the invitation to be here this evening, he was happy for Ms. McCully to have this moment in the spotlight. Please join me in congratulating her on this outstanding achievement. Next this evening, we have Ms. Carrie Jupp. First, we are proud to recognize Carrie Jupp, who was named High School Counselor of the Year at the West Virginia School Counselor Association Conference, as well as JCS Counselor of the Year. Ms. Jupp humbly accepted these honors on behalf of the entire Jefferson High School counseling team, sharing that the awards reflect their shared dedication to supporting students each day. While her achievements have been celebrated widely over the past month, tonight, we are proud once again to congratulate Ms. Jupp on this well-deserved recognition. Our last two groups of awards this evening are a continuation of our All-Star Staff Awards from every school. This evening, we have Shepherdstown Elementary School Principal Ms. Jody Payne, and Shepherdstown Middle School Ms. Rebecca Horn to come forward and recognize their staff.
First, I would like to recognize Raylene Birick, our special ed teacher at Shepherdstown Elementary. One of the many, many great things about this special, special educator is her ability to jump in and make sure all kids are getting an equitable education. And she has really partnered with teams of grade levels this year at our school, and undeniably, her kids are benefiting from being exposed to all content that all general education students are exposed to on a daily. So I just am so proud of Raylene and all that she is doing for our students. I also want to take this time to recognize Amy Dinjas, our finance secretary. We just received Amy at our school this year, and I just can't imagine ever having somebody like Amy not being at our school. Like, she is just irreplaceable in every way. Everything that she does, it's for students and staff, first-minded, and she's a go-getter. She just doesn't do her job. She asks, what else can I do? And she already has it done sometimes before the thought finishes coming out of my head. So I am so glad that we were able to get Amy at our school, and I hope we keep her forever and ever.
For Shepherdstown Middle School, we'd like to nominate two outstanding stars. Our first is our teacher, Ms. Andrea Faith. She is a problem solver, an innovator, and dynamic member of our school. Her enthusiasm, love, and passion for teaching, as well as her students, are incredible. She's known for being firm but fair, having rules yet maintaining relationships, and remaining current with latest instructional strategies and technologies to meet the needs of her students. Additionally, Ms. Faith serves as our FCCLA sponsor, where she teaches her students to strive for excellence, to respect each other, and to support our community. We're honored to recognize Ms. Andrea Faith as our star teacher. This member is James Bowles. Bowles serves as our day shift custodian, where his diligence and quick eye for detail are noted in zero complaints about missing spots. He cheerfully and quickly responds to any additional requests, support for school events, and to help his peers. He quickly transitioned to his new role during breakfast and lunch duties by building rapport with his students. He's ready and able to help any new student navigate the salad bar, carry bowls of hot soup, and open the fruit and tiny fruit packages. His diligence, respect, and teamwork have earned him the respect of staff and students. We are happy to recognize him as a star cardinal as well.
That concludes our student and staff recognitions for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there, next up, we have the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular minutes from March 24, 2025, and the special board meeting minutes held March 31, 2025, and April 15, 2025?
I make a motion to accept.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Twyford. Any discussion or questions? Very none, all in favor of the board meeting minutes from March 24, 2025, March 31, 2025, and April 15, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have citizens' comments. And just a reminder that all speakers are limited to three minutes, and speakers are prohibited from making negative or derogatory comments using a name or position by which an individual can be identified. Comments may not be threatening, profane, vulgar, or abusive, or the speaker will be required to cease his or her comments. First up, we have Heather Murray, followed by Reagan Wills.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Heather Murray, and I stand before you this evening on behalf of my community and as a parent of minority children within Jefferson County schools. As an educator with nearly 30 years' experience, I've ridden the waves of many mandates and experienced the impact, first as an educator, but also as a parent. This evening, I just come to you with a bit of sadness in the wake of the most recent mandates to abolish equity initiatives in the public school settings. As such, I just have a couple of questions for JCS schools. Since equity initiatives focus on creating environments that embrace diversity, ensure fairness, and foster a sense of belonging for all, how will this look for the staff and students of diverse backgrounds here in Jefferson County? How will Jefferson County continue to ensure that all populations will receive an equitable How will Jefferson County continue to ensure that all populations will receive an equitable education specific to their unique educational needs? How will programming for all students, I'm sorry, oh yeah, how will programming for all students provide the equity, the rigor, and foster the unique learning experiences and dispositions of students of diverse backgrounds? Finally, and most importantly, is Jefferson County schools willing to partner with community stakeholders to develop a plan and ensure that all students are considered for favorable outcomes? I believe as a community, we can accomplish more by working together. And as this little slice of heaven continues to grow, as you all have noticed, it's imperative that we be prepared for all populations that will be representative. As always, I thank you for considering my questions and allowing me an opportunity to speak respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Reagan Wills, followed by Cassandra Wills. Give me just one moment to reset the timer. Okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Reagan Wills, and I'm a junior here at Washington High. I've been an active member of my Black Student Union for about three years, and I'm involved in other activities such as the marching band and other school organizations. For starters, I would like to thank the board for their active support and student well-being. And I just quickly wanted to address the concerns as not only a student of a marginalized group, but a neurodivergent student as well. I believe these conversations are immensely important in the context of education, as many students from Jefferson County come from diverse backgrounds. I sincerely hope that with these given circumstances, that the school board and administrators will help provide more of necessary support and resources so that students like me, and there are many, can grow and have a safe environment to learn and prosper. I know from personal experience that students my age benefit greatly from an environment they feel seen and heard in. This can impact a schooling environment greatly, and I hope that these practices can be prioritized and preserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cassandra Wills, followed by Zonadra Lansdowne.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent and members of the board. My name is Cassandra Hurston-Wills. You just heard from my daughter. I just want to briefly read a quick statement. So, dear members of Jefferson County's Board of Education, on behalf of the Black Teacher Association Parent Hub, as well as the Hispanic and Latino Association, we are writing to express our sincere appreciation in advance for your continued commitment to community connections within our school system. We deeply value your dedication to ensuring a safe and welcoming learning environment for our students in Jefferson County, particularly those from marginalized populations. We recognize the significance, the role the board plays in establishing policies for fostering practices that champion the well-being and unbiased treatment of our students. Your proactive efforts in cultivating a climate of respect, belonging, and understanding are essential for empowering every child to reach their full potential. Creating and maintaining a learning environment free from hostility is a shared responsibility, and we commend your ongoing work in this crucial area. We believe that when all students feel safe, valued, and respected, our schools and community as a whole are strengthened immeasurably. Furthermore, we want to express the strong commitment of both the Black Teacher Parent Hub and the Hispanic and Latino Association to actively support you in making crucial commitments a reality. We are ready and willing to work collaboratively with the board, administration, educators, and the wider community to ensure that best practices, accessibility, and engagement are still implemented, and that a safe and inclusive learning environment is fostered for every student. We believe that through open communication, shared efforts, and a unified vision, we can collectively ensure these vital goals are achieved. I thank you for your dedication to doing what is right for all students in Jefferson County, and we look forward to partnering with you in this important endeavor. Sincerely, the Black Teacher Parent Hub, students, and Hispanic and Latino Association families. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next is Zondrea Lansdowne, followed by Elizabeth Nesbit on Zoom.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak for just a moment. I'm here because I'm a parent. I'm a parent of a lot of children, and all of us kind of look alike. And it's kind of important to me that we are seen, and we are heard, and we are respected just as everyone else is. And I feel that it's very important that with everything that's going on outside of the world right now, that you all just remember, when you start making your decisions on what comes and what goes here in the county, that we are still here, and we are a part of this organization, of this beautiful place. And we all need to work together. And to do that, it's important that we are represented. It's kind of hard for us right now, because when you walk into a class, you don't see someone that looks like one of your children sometimes. And as much as we want to, sometimes we need to be educated back and forth. And sometimes we need to be reminded that we're all same, just like we're all different. So that's all I just wanted to say tonight, is just to keep your minds open, your mind, your brains, your love for people, and just know that all those little kids that are sitting out back there are our future, and we need to remember how we raise them up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me? Will you let me know if you can hear me? Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello? 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 I don't, hello? I'll keep trying. I'm trying to speak, and no one can hear me, and I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. Hello? I can't do it on my end, or will probably have to do it yourselves. Hello, hello, hello? I can't hear anything. I had such a good thing to say, too. All right, let me try at least putting something in the chat. Hello? Okay, there you are. Hello? 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 Elizabeth, is that you?
Yeah, this is me, hello. Hello? Now I can hear some people, but can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for your patience. Whenever you're ready, you can start.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for letting me speak, and for all that you do as the Board of Education, and also for the charming award ceremony. I speak today on behalf of myself, my family, and another family with a middle school student in Jefferson County. As parents of middle schoolers in Jefferson County, we strongly support Ms. Tanya Frazier, and we believe her position was vital to our schools. We are troubled by the elimination of her role and the cultural unity and equity department that was fought, that was fought for 20 years ago. This is very disappointing. This position ensured that needs of all students were being met, including mine and the Snyder families. I urge you to commit to making equity a priority. We are all D E I. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have the consent agenda. This is Loring.
Good evening. No changes to the consent agenda and the personal actions that was submitted to you for this evening.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Ms. Twyford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Under Superintendent Staffing Recommendations, number eight, school nurse is being eliminated at Blue Ridge. It says it was vacant positions at the end. Is this the second nursing position?
Yes, that's correct. There are two nurses presently on the Blue Ridge campus. And when this position was brought forward to you at the beginning of the school year, it was for one school year only. That's what it was approved for.
Okay, but is it still needed?
There's still one nurse that is at the school as far as an additional nurse. You know, we continue to assess those needs and monitor for any changes, but at this time, no.
My other question is number 84. I'm trying to understand the creation of a new position. The Child Nutrition and Wellness Coordinator, I understand Ms. White is going to explain that?
Well, I can start it off, and if she feels that there's any gaps, she is more than welcome to join in. But as we assess the Child Nutrition Department and the feeding programs that the school district is required to monitor with state and federal compliance, with the retirement in that department was an opportunity, like I said, as ongoing assessment of that office is proceeding, that an additional position and changing that retirement, that position into a more robust job to coordinate and monitor all the feeding programs in the school district and implementing our wellness policy and program is also a program that is required by state. It has several responsibilities that are required also during the summer months to be able to close out a school year, but also to prepare us for our feeding programs for the start of a brand-new school year.
Okay.
So again, just like with a lot of programs, increased responsibilities and expectations on the school district to proceed with that program with fidelity.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda as presented? Hearing none, all in favor?
Just real quick. I want to get an understanding, as Dr. Joy asked about the school nurse for BRE. I thought that when we heard their LSIC, that they did need a nurse.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, you know, certain things are taken at certain snapshots in time, so that will have to be continued to be assessed. But there are changes and movements that they may not be aware of. That is the information that they had at that point in time. But where we are at today, it is continuing to be the recommendation of the superintendent to not review that position right now.
Okay. And then number 17, the board tech media specialist, that's being pulled.
Being pulled as far as?
As far as, from the county office, is that?
Removed from the county office, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to make one comment in regards to, you know, all of the changes that had to be made due to being unsure of where the funding is coming from, or what the future looks like, that uncertainty. I appreciate everybody speaking up. We're, I think we're all in this together, is trying to figure out where the chips are going to fall and how this is going to work. I do want to thank everyone that has been in a position where they have made such a huge impact, the kind of impact that brings people out in droves to talk about them and their good work. And I have faith in our school staff and in our community that that positive impact will live on, and we will see where this goes. But I know that some amazing work has been done, and I do not think that that will be for naught, regardless of how things turn out.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Oppose? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Deputy Superintendent of Operations update. It's an update on the new Shepherdstown construction.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everyone again. I'll await the PowerPoint that's going to accompany this, but if you've driven by and seen Shepherdstown Elementary, you'll note that it's looking very, very much like a school on the outside, and we're excited to mark a lot of progress. A lot of trades are currently in Shepherdstown Elementary, and they are working diligently and very hard to reach completion on the school. So we can go past the first two slides. And there, for those of you that haven't seen it, we have the outside of the school. They are still doing work on the roof of that school, as we can obviously tell by the picture. This represents the front of the school. To the right, we'll have the bus loop, and to the left will be the car loop, as well as staff parking. Continue, please. This is a shot of the related arts wing. What was exciting about that, and you can advance to the next picture, is during my site visit late last week, they're pouring the concrete to the outdoor classrooms. As we will remember, this school has a lot of outdoor spaces, one outside the dining hall and one here outside of the steam and the art rooms, so that students can go outside. And I know, as a lot of people seeing, see it laying there and it being at the front of the school, they're going to be concerned about safety, so that we'll have a nice wrought iron fencing around the front of that, so that students can enjoy the space safely. Next slide. Here, we're looking down into the front hall on the left. That's the front entryway. And then on the other side, we're looking at some office spaces. Continue, please. And this looks a little bit dizzying now, because they were laying drywall that day and obviously doing the mudding that goes with it. But that is the gymnasium, same size as Rancin Elementary. To the right of the picture, you can see the stage. Here we have a different, well, I included this to show the color palette of the school. So we're actually looking at restrooms, and on the left is the nice soft green that is in that school. And then on the right would be a staff restroom, and you see the nice soft, it's almost like a purple color, very nice feel to the school, very natural colors in this school. So that's just a little bit of the color palette. I wanted to highlight the classrooms and the color palettes that we are having in this school, in the classroom. I wanted to highlight the classrooms and the color palettes that we are having in this school, in the classrooms. You'll see there, we're calling these a bear den, so you can see the bear den, which is a sideways oval, the reading or book nook. Here's a second color for the school, and the last slide shows us a third, which is a nice soft green. So those are examples of some classrooms. And there, they're just preparing one. That shows a little bit better view of the reading nook, and the built-ins will be to the left. That room is, I can tell, a pre-K because to the left, we see a space for those little teeny-tiny restroom fixtures we're putting in there. The timeline for the school, as you know, Ranson had beautiful weather. And so for Ranson Elementary, the school zipped right along. This project hasn't been as fortunate. There have been some weather delays. So in a very recent meeting with the contractor, we made the wise decision to move substantial completion to September nineteenth, which means we will not have an August opening. But in doing so, we are not going to rush and hurry the staff and put the staff in a school where there still aren't kinks worked out. The nice thing about Ranson opening in January was that we had time to work out the kinks, to get the freezer started up and start up all the equipment smoothly, to have a nice, clean school for the Ranson staff and students when they came in. So we're going to afford Shepherdstown Elementary the same opportunity and do a mid-year move.
But school for them will be starting on time.
Yes, yes. I don't want anyone to think that they will skip first semester. They'll be right at home. There's no hurry for them to move out of their current facility, so they will be learning from Old Shepherdstown Elementary for a semester. Thank you, Kathy, for pointing that out. There might have been kids cheering just now, so. Not the case. The last thing I want to share with you is just a little bit, you might have driven around and seen this because we're right on the campus, is just the Washington High School Auxiliary Gym. This project is slated to complete next year. If you'll advance a slide, we can take a look at what it looks like. It's just grading. If you've driven by and seen it, they're bringing it up to grade. They've moved in construction trailers. Recently, they, while the students weren't in, they have moved some of the underground utilities around so that they can start the plum work that'll need to go into the gym before they lay that concrete pad. So they're moving right along as well. That project is a baby, but so far, it's on time. So that's my update for this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up, we have special programs presentation.
Good evening, Ms.
Good evening, Ms. Skinner, members of the board. Dr. Bishop, thank you for allowing us to come again here tonight to carry on part two. And I believe unless Dr. Bishop tells me differently, this will be the last time that we see each other till after summer. And then we will come back in the fall and begin again. I'm anxious to come back to you in the fall and bring you the results of our annual desk audit, which we've got a little inside peek of, but we're pretty excited to bring that back to you for the work that we've done. So while they're preparing the PowerPoint, I have a new group of people here with me tonight for some of you. The first person here is Ms. Patty Hughes. She is one of our facilitators that came to us from a little bit below us. She has a little bit of a South Carolina draw to her, which we love to have in our office to hear her talk. But she is our transition specialist for the county. Starcha Canada comes to us from all over the place, Texas, Alaska, Maryland. She is going to be taking on our LEAP or our autism lead next year. Kristi Horning is, I don't want to say an oldie but a goodie, but Kristi is here with us tonight, too. And then Ms. Martin Principal T A Lowry is here to talk a little bit. Well, so I'll let Kristi come up and begin.
Good evening, everybody. Just to recap from where we were in March, when we presented to you, we talked about the West Virginia Tier System of Support, how our students across the board receive intervention services for areas of reading, math, and social-emotional learning support. We talked about the referral process, child find, how do we find those students who may need more support and to work through the process of identification for special education services? And then the overview from our school psychologist, who talked about all the different assessments and components that are necessary in order to determine if a child has weaknesses and/or strengths and how we can best support them. And then eligibility specifically to those areas of exceptionality that the state recognizes. Moving forward tonight, we're going to talk to you a little bit about the eligibility determination and reporting process, initial I E P meetings, progress monitoring, annual reviews and reevaluations, the importance of transition planning, and the L R E, or least restrictive environment, and the continuum of services that we do provide all of our students. So when we look at eligibility determination, we are following our policy twenty-four nineteen that is derived from I D E A. The group of people who make these determinations are comprised of the L E A administrator or special education facilitator from our office, principal or their designee, members of the evaluation team, like our school psychologists and our related service providers, which include our speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, vision specialists, a general educator and/or a special educator, parents or the guardian of a student, students, which is optional, but sometimes students, starting at the age of fourteen, elect to participate in these meetings. And then additional individuals, if needed, and have specific expertise relating to what may be a concern of the student. This is our team of folks that help determine the eligibility for services. Next slide. Again, this team of individuals take into account all of the data that is collected for and about students, whether that is formative assessment data, classroom data that the teacher provides, the psychoeducational evaluations that our school psychologists complete, any of those related service providers. And another important component is the parent and the information that they share with us, either from outside medical professionals that they have a medical diagnosis about, or just their general knowledge of their student. They're an important component of the eligibility and/or I E P process. When we look at meeting criteria for special education services, we talked to you about a three-pronged criteria, meaning that first, they meet the eligibility criteria within one of those exceptionalities, and that, two, there is an adverse effect to the educational performance of the student, and lastly, that they need specially-designed instruction. When all three of those categories have been met, then the student qualifies for special education services. The next slide looks a little bit, and this is approximate, it can change on any given day, but the number of students that each of these service providers have on their caseload. So currently, an average for an occupational therapist in the district looks at thirty-four students per caseload. Physical therapist has twenty-eight. The speech therapist has thirty-seven, and developmental pre-K services look at twenty-six for case managers. So we are growing. While Jefferson County enrollment may decline, our special education population continues to grow. Next, we have the initial I E P meeting process, and I'll hand that over to Starcha.
Good evening. Okay, taking you further along our journey through special education. We, following eligibility of a child that's going into special education, within thirty days of that eligibility meeting, the team must develop the initial I E P along with the parents and all important stakeholders. So that has to be held within thirty calendar days of the eligibility determination. Required participants include parents, the special education teacher, general education teacher, the L E A representative, which is typically a campus admin, and the evaluator and any others as needed. First, the team will start off with the development of the present levels of academic achievement or functional performance, otherwise known as the P L A F or P L E P. And those are right along with our West Virginia standards and policy twenty-four nineteen. Once present levels have been established, and that really is the foundation of the I E P, that's what everything is really built on, then measurable annual goals are written for that child in any areas of need. So whether that's academic areas, functional areas, executive functioning areas, behavior. And there are a lot of different areas that measurable annual goals can be written to develop, and they're developed based on data from the evaluation. And those are aligned with our West Virginia content standards. Once a present level has been written, and then we go into, we develop measurable annual goals as a team in determination, then we do the determination of related services, accommodations, modifications, and specialized instruction. Once all that takes place, then we make placement decision based on this child's least restrictive environment. We'll talk about least restrictive environment a little bit later in this presentation, but I think it's important that, we know that's kind of the last piece of an I E P. You know, with me working with the LEAP program, with the autism program, it's important that, you know, we always are considering that child's L R E and all of the tools or all of the pieces, the I E P, that they need prior to making a placement decision. So that is one of the last decisions of the I E P team is the placement decision. As part of the evaluation process, developing an I E P and then postinitial I E P is progress monitoring, and that is really important for all of our staff to make sure that we're taking excellent progress information on our students to keep so that we can guide, that can guide us in informed instruction. So progress monitoring is systematic data collection aligned to their I E P goals, which are also aligned to the West Virginia content standards or our alternate achievement standards, if applicable. Tools may include curriculum-based measurements, observations, rubrics, and checklist. That's going to be outlined in the I E P. The frequency of reporting is also defined in the I E P, but it's typically done quarterly at a minimum. Usually, those I E P progress reports will come home with the general ed report cards. Again, using progress data to inform instruction, revise goals, or adjust services is really important. We don't want to just arbitrarily report the data, just like we ask our gen ed teachers to use that data to inform instruction. It would be the same for a student with an I E P goal. If they're making progress, great, let's keep going. If they're not making progress, let's meet again and see where we can revise or what we can do to better meet that child's needs. And all of this is documented using the W V D E approved progress reporting tools. We this is wonderful. That's built right in. It makes it very easy for our staff to get in and report that progress quarterly. Next slide is about annual reviews and reevaluations. So the initial I E P has to take place within thirty days, but every year annually, the I E P has to be reviewed. So, and that can take place at any point in the year. It just has to be reviewed every three hundred and sixty-five days or three hundred and sixty-four because if we want to meet that deadline. And in an annual review, we'll update goals, services, and progress. It's also important to know that reevaluation is required at least every three years, unless the parent or team agree it is unnecessary. So if they come to that three-year time and they say, you know, we don't really need any additional data to consider eligibility, the student will continue eligibility, then that's okay. That also, that process can also be initiated earlier if additional concerns arise, if the team is considering a possible change in exceptionality, or if there's just additional areas the team really needs to look at and consider, that three-year reevaluation process can begin sooner. During evaluation reviews, academic achievements review, developmental needs reviews, functional performance, again, we're looking at the whole child and their entire educational experience. At that point, it may involve new assessments or review of existing data, and we are ensuring that continued eligibility and need for special education under policy twenty-four nineteen. Thank you. Ms. Patty is going to talk to you about transition and how important that is.
You can go back one slide, please. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I am going to give you a little overview of the transition process, beginning no later than a student's fourteenth birthday. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires that we do a coordinated set of activities that facilitate a student's movement from school to post-school. And so no later than then, we began a transition process. And it bridges the gap because it allows a student-centered process, a gap between school and post-school life by preparing our students for life after high school through personalized planning. It focuses on the areas like education, employment, and independent living. And we work with each student to help identify what their goals are in that area. It's a comprehensive approach because it not only includes working with the student, but actually the whole I E P team. We work with the parents, we work with the students, with the teachers, transition specialists, and even community agencies at some point. It impacts our student outcomes by exploring career interests, gaining work experience, and developing skills that are needed for competitive employment and such. Change the slide, please. Essential elements here, we assess students in three key areas for their transition. It is employment, education and training, and independent living. Great efforts are taken to make sure that our students understand I have an opportunity to take different interest inventories and things like that. And by doing this, we're able to help them create not only a course of study in high school that's going to help them prepare for the future, but also have wonderful work opportunities and things like that that may be possible. We coordinate those services by working not only with the students, as I said before, but the parents. Some of our outside agencies include the Division of Rehab Services and the vocational rehabilitation portion of that. And then also, some of our students who have more severe disabilities, we work with agencies that are maybe more adult-oriented through a Medicaid waiver process and different community stakeholders. With students' involvement in this, we really have to think about nothing about me without me. And that's one of my big goals in working with our students who are fourteen and older, is these are big decisions that are being made. And so we want to make sure that the students are integrally involved in every aspect of this. We also have community partnerships, which include businesses, agencies, and sometimes their mom and pop have their businesses they own. Sometimes we work with companies. Sometimes we work with school-based enterprises. So transition planning, I could talk an hour on it, so it's hard to put it in a few minutes here, but I would say that my years of working in high school, this is one of the most meaningful processes that we can go lead the kids through to help prepare them for life after high school. Thank you.
One of the things that Patty and Kristi won't mention because they're very humble people, but they recognize that there was some transition things that were missing in the county, and those things cost money. Over the last ten months, I guess, ten to twelve months, Kristi and Patty and a team have brought in over a hundred thousand dollars in grant money to bring in multiple programs to help build the transition process for these students. So I have to commend them for the work that they've done and they will continue to do. But that's a, that's a huge amount of money when we start thinking about going into that population. But we're going to talk just a second about L R E. That's a big buzzword, and sometimes that becomes the most contentious part of the I E P meeting when we start talking about L R E or the least restrictive environment. And what you see on the slide here is the continuum that goes from the least restrictive at the top to the most restrictive at the bottom. We have the general education environment, then we have the consultation where the teacher, the special education teacher or the case manager works with the general education teacher and just make sure that everything is going okay and what supports are needed. Oftentimes, we'll have a special education aide that is in the classroom supporting, and then we get into collaboration where there's a push-in model, where there is a portion of the instructional block where the special education teacher pushes in. We also have the We also have the co-teaching model, which is a partnership between two teachers that Ms. Martin's going to talk about, the TA Lowry has really jumped on for the last two years. We do have the pull-out model, which becomes more restrictive because a student is pulled away from their general education peers. Then we have our specialized programs for us. Those are the LEAP and the ABLE, the LIFE program, Lolly House. And then finally, when we start talking about a separate school, which is non-public, then that's when it becomes our most restrictive environment. So Ms. Martin's going to come up here, and next slide there, if they can. Ms. Martin's going to come up, and she's really going to talk about the co-teaching in the general education classroom, or in what that partnership between two teachers looks like.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. We are really excited at TA that we have been able to initiate co-teaching in this year, our fourth and fifth grade classrooms, and next year, in our third grade classrooms. The co-teaching process has taken a lot of co-planning time. Each one of our grade levels has a co-planning time with their team, but to look at how we have been able to implement co-teaching has really taken the time to look at assessments, and to look at what will benefit the students, whether it's still a pull-out program or that co-teaching. And we have found that co-teaching has been very successful. The co-teaching is really the best of both worlds. There are two teachers in the classroom, the general educator and the special educator. And our co-teaching pairs have been so well-developed that you can't tell which is the general educator and which is the special educator, if you don't know those teachers. So it has taken assessing from the county level, we have county data teams, we have in-house our school data teams to look at data, to look at what benefits those students. And again, currently, we have a fourth grade co-teaching class, a fifth grade co-teaching class, and we're excited that we'll be able to bring that to the third grade next year as well. We, the benefits on the next slide, when we talk about what are the benefits, we have two specialized teachers in the classroom, a certified special educator and a certified general educator, that get to plan together and really do give the best of both worlds to the students. We have supportive environments in those classrooms, and our results, we can say that 100% of the special ed students that are in the co-taught class have increased according to their AIMS Web scores. So it's been a very, very positive impact that co-teaching has had. Powerful learning PLCs, professional learning communities, that we've created in our building as well. So it's been a very positive, positive journey for all of our staff, and I can't thank our staff enough, because they have really dug in and jumped in full force with it. So it's been a huge benefit for our students. Thank you.
So at this time, we will open it up to any questions that any board members might have for any members of the team.
I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Slide six. You mentioned related services, but I'm wondering the average case capacity for special ed teacher?
Sure, sure. So, Policy 2419 says it cannot go over 30, and it's going to vary from school to school, depending on how many special education teachers are there. Christie, I would wager to say that we keep it at 20 or below.
We did have some schools that the high schools have a higher number of long-term students, just because of the, the number of long-term clubs, especially in Washington High School. So those who are certified may provide some extra support to those long-term clubs, just to ensure that if they have questions, that they are helping that, or to make sure that the programming is correct.
So, for example, the OT, average 34 on the caseload, do they spend an hour per child? So for 34 children, what's the, what does that actually mean in terms of how much time are they with these students? Because it's one thing, the special ed case manager, they're teaching likely all day.
So it's very prescriptive.
What does the OT job look like?
So it's very prescriptive to the individual student. As you go up into high school, typically those numbers can decrease, the, the minutes that they see per student can decrease each month. At our younger grades, in our kindergarten, first grade, second grade, they can be higher. So I'd hate to roll a number out to you, because it's not accurate across the board. I can, I can absolutely break those numbers down and get them to you if you'd like to know the average minutes per, minutes per month for each one of those, we can definitely send that out to you. But the other thing that we have to remember is that our OTs that do services, our service our campuses like TA, Wood, that have our higher need programs, typically their numbers are going to be a little bit higher, but that does not mean that the number of students they have is equally as high. So they could have lower numbers, but they have more minutes, because the needs of those students are higher as well.
I have a question about the IEE cap that you mentioned in a previous meeting, and I'm wondering if it's a federal or state law that allows you to impose that cap on parents? Because I haven't been able to find that. So is this just a Jefferson County?
No, ma'am. That is a federal mandate, where each district is permitted to set the level based off of trending numbers or trending cost, based on where you are in the, in the state, or where you are in the country. So, a smaller, more rural area might have a different amount than we do over here on Easter Panhandle, West Virginia.
So, because I couldn't find that, where would that be?
It is in Policy 2419, but we also just, on Friday, got our, got some updated guidance from the West Virginia Department of Education Office of Special Education on the IEE for us as districts, our district leaders. So we can also push those things over to the board members as well.
Okay. And then, my other question is related to slide number 12, because you explain a lot of the levels of service provided. The biggest question that I hear from parents is the difference between the IEP and the 504, and I, I think you did talk about that a couple meetings ago, but the bigger question is how do they qualify? And parents are afraid that they don't get equal protection with a 504, or equal services. So, can you just clarify that?
Which, so you asked me a couple questions there, the, the parents don't understand how they get which one of those two, and then we talked, you talked about the procedural rights, which, which question did you want me to kind of address first? So you, how do, how do, how do students become eligible for an IEP as opposed to a 504, or how do they get a 504 instead of an IEP, where, what? That's a really broad question.
I, I don't, I wasn't asking about how they qualify, I guess. I, I'm trying to understand what rights do students have, if, with, they have a 504 versus an IEP? Because parents are afraid that if they get a 504, the, maybe it's not looked at as seriously as the IEP. So, is that true? If not, then why have a different, why not just give everybody an IEP? Why would you give a student a 504?
Sure. So, both the 504 and the IEP are both federally required, are federally mandated and federally protected. It's two different acts that protect a 504 versus an IEP, the Individuals Disabilities Education Act, and then we have the Disability Act that came in in 1978, I believe. Both of them, because they are protected, both of them hold the exact, should hold the exact same weight in a classroom, for an administrator, for a parent, for whoever it might be. There should not be any difference in whether the accommodations are being met on either one of those two. When you talk about, why don't we just give everyone a, an IEP as opposed to a 504? If you flip back two slides, I believe, it was the one that Ms. Horning did, that is, I apologize, the one right before the eligibility determination has the caseloads on it. When we talk about an IEP, it's really important that we understand, and that, and our facilitators do a good job, that it has to be met for all three prongs. We go through a checklist, whether we're looking at autism, or we look at learning disability, whether we're looking at OHI, all three prongs must be met, that's per state and national laws. And if all three of those prongs cannot be checked, a student cannot be found eligible for an IEP.
Where are these three prongs?
They're on this, if you look at the slide before the caseload, it talks about the criteria that all, all three of those must be met. And we actually, the state provides us with a checklist, and everything has to be checked off there. All of the committee members have to agree to that. And then if they, they don't agree, then we go to the next steps of that. But if any of those three are not able to be checked or affirmed by the group, then an IEP cannot be put in place for the student. Oftentimes, that is where we can go to look at a 504 for the student, if there is a documented disability that falls under the criteria that, that is provided to us.
I, I, I mean, I see students with 504s that meet these criteria. They need specialized instruction, because they need accommodations, and et cetera. This is...
And, and I understand what you're saying, but we have a process that we have to follow, we have professionals that go through those things. I can't, I, I'm, I'm not in a position to say that you're wrong, I'm wrong, that any of us are wrong. We have a process that we have to go through, and that those things have been documented. So, you know, if, if we look at each individual student, then the parent can, we can review that with the parent to talk about why your student didn't meet the eligibility criteria for an IEP. But I can't, you know, I can't get into that right now.
Thank you.
I would just say quickly, thank you for the work that you guys are doing for the transitional piece. Personally, as a parent who was in that position 15-plus years ago now, there, when there wasn't really anything there, I can tell you how important that is to start early and to get into that process, to get involved with. At the time, I think we used the, in Martinsburg, West Virginia, whatever the transition service was, I can't remember the name of the title, but I remember they assigned us someone, and then that person quit, and by the time they trained another person, you know, it was late senior year before there was really any work done there. So, the earlier they can start, the better. I'm convinced that the co-teaching classroom that my child had the opportunity to have from second grade on, and those transitional services are why they are functionally successful, no issues today. So, those two things are extremely important, to get that early intervention and get going. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing.
And it's unfortunately gotten worse and sogg then, in terms of the DHHR's ability to provide services or provide a worker. We are now, I think we're up to, if they're not 18 and a senior, they won't even attend a meeting.
Right.
So that's the work of them that our team is doing is even more important to, to kind of get those going.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Mr. White, I have a quick question about the specialized programs with the transition planning. The LEAP, the ABLE, the LIFE, and the Lolly House, are we, do we have capacity still in those programs? I know, like, with the OLC, we've been at capacity and haven't been able to service as many kids as we've needed to. Are those programs, is there...
Today, we have availability. Tomorrow, I can't tell you what's going to happen. No, we do have availability, and, you know, one of the things that this board has been able, has been willing to do for us, is when we come to you and say we need more, you open those up and you say, okay. So we are, we're, we're getting to the seams, and then we go to Dr. Bishop and say, we need another classroom, and he looks at me and smiles and says, okay, we'll take it to the board. So, but we're, you know, we're working to, to, to ensure that we don't meet capacity on, on our programs.
Thank you.
So, just a quick question. I want to go back to the IEEs. If a...
Ms. Patton, could you move the microphone closer, because I don't think it's picking you up?
If a parent is asking for outside testing, or outside evaluation for, you know, the IE, is it normal for us to determine what tests the outside psychologists can give?
When we say "we," who are we representing? Are we... Jefferson County Special Programs, so yes. So, in terms of, so Jefferson County Special Programs are deemed to be the expert as a community or as a team, in terms of, this is what we're offering, or this is what we have offered. Now, when we work outside of that, or we don't necessarily assume that parents understand all the ins and outs and nuances of the Woodcock Johnson, or any of those, the Wyatt, those kinds of tests are given. Many of those tests do have, they do have protocols in place for a reason, that are nationally developed to say, the more that you give a test, the more frequent a student becomes with them, familiar they become with them, and the easier it is for them to score higher. Those are nationally normed procedures that our school psychologists are deemed to, to follow, and they pass them down to us. So, when we look at the tests that, for an IEE, we do oftentimes say, hey, this test was just given a year ago, 18 months ago, there was, there hasn't been anything that would really determine that a student is going to score differently. We haven't had anything like a traumatic brain injury, or, you know, any kind of surgeries that would maybe alter the mental capacity of the student. So, those are things that we, we do exclude if we're going to pay for the IE, and for those things, and we do have the right to say, here, the tests that we have, are too frequent for us to be able to, to allow to have happen again, because we just don't feel like it's going to change the processes of what that is. Parents more than willing, I mean, the parents more than able to do whatever they would like to pay for it themselves, but if we're paying for it, then those are the things that we look at. And there are a broad battery of tests that can be done for each individual thing as well, though.
Right. Okay. Because I'm just thinking like this, if I go to the doctor, and the doctor tells me I have a heart problem, and then I decide that I want to get a second opinion, then when I go to the next cardiologist, the insurance company doesn't say to me, well, you can't get another, you know, test to determine if something's wrong with your heart. So, I'm just wondering, is it something that, that Jefferson County has decided that you can't get a second determination?
So, I, I think we're going down a rabbit hole that I don't know whether, in public forum, I want to go down. Is it okay for me to just kind of not answer that question, Dr. Bishop, and do that at one-on-one? Is that okay? That's what I would suggest, yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your presentation this evening, we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, so first up, I'm going to give a presentation on the OLC from the Department of Responsive Ed. Next slide, please. So just a rundown on the staff, we have an administrator, Mrs. Van Dell, and we have three teachers, one paraprofessional, and one afternoon halftime options pathway teacher, and Ms. Tice. Excuse me, to the process, how is a student enrolled in the OLC? Student is enrolled through the SAT or IEP process after administrator from the homeschool and OLC have communicated. How does a student transition back to their homeschool? At the end of each semester, the SAT or IEP team reconvenes for progress monitoring with academics and behavior, and make a team decision. And we did implement a new process of half-days this year in the homeschool to slowly transition the student back full-time. So with the half-days, we still have some kinks to work out, but with the half-days, we have an 83% successful transition rate back. As far as our enrollment, students we have served for this school year, we have a total of 36 students. Our current enrollment is 15 in the day program, and that is six students max per classroom, kind of what Ms. Skinner was talking about earlier. And that is six students max per classroom, kind of what Ms. Skinner was talking about earlier, at the max capacity. We have 10 high school students. We have two options pathway students, and we have three middle school students right now. We have 12 students in our three-to-five program. And the three-to-five program provides an alternative option for students to be successful with additional focus support in a smaller setting. Moving on to our options pathway. This is currently housed in the OLC, but starting next school year will be housed in each high school. This is designed for students that are behind in their credits and danger of not graduating. So, there's three different options, and this is all run through Ms. Tice, again, as the afternoon halftime teacher at the OLC. So, option one is GED prep combined with CTE classes. Option two is for seniors, seniors only, and it's for one class. So, for example, if they failed multiple English classes or multiple math classes, they would be enrolled in options two. And then options three, where the student maintains their school schedule, but signs up for the GED. If the student is successful in this GED, then that will not count against our graduation rate the following year. Moving on to some of the connections, student staff connections. Students earn three earned breaks throughout the school day, and this time is used for student-staff social emotional connections. And they do this through games, physical activity, exercise, and social time with peers. The OLC is heavily involved in community service. They partner with the Rantson Community Garden, the City of Rantson, Meals on Wheels, Kids Power Packs. And staff use these opportunities to serve as models and demonstrate appropriate problem-solving, teamwork, and collaborative skills. In addition to goal-setting, progress monitoring, advisory, students work with the epic adolescent health coordinator for 40 minutes per week. They engage in progress monitoring, goal-tracking, and attendance is also monitored through the live school program. The live school program then determines recreational project time and currency for their economy system at the school store at the OLC. Moving on to the future. 2025 and '26 school year, the program will move to rise, where staff and students will have new classrooms, a gym, and a cafeteria. Our goal is to prepare for an enrollment of 40 students. Proposed staff changes include an addition of a science teacher, so that'll move up to four core teachers. And the options pathway, as I just discussed, will move to each high school. The additional student enrollment will provide support to students, families, and secondary schools. This PowerPoint slide moves right on to JVA, so I'm just going to go through JVA, and then I'll break at the end for questions. So, rundown of our JVA staff. We have Ms. Fitzgerald as the coordinator of virtual learning, Ms. Atkinson, Mr. Waltz, Ms. Fort, Ms. Toyful, and Ms. Rook. The JVA staff was decreased by three for the start of this school year. However, historically, JVA has served the highest number of students totaling 670. How does a student enroll in JVA? This is by choice during scheduling season in the spring. For the following school year, after the school year is underway, enrollment is through change of placement or SAT meeting. Counselors, registrars, and administrators from secondary schools complete paperwork and hybrid request form, and they direct students to review the family and JVA program details. A meeting is then scheduled in this Fitzgerald, the student and the family to review JVA expectations and procedures prior to the student's first day to ensure a successful start. Students and families can also view the orientation video, which is posted on the JVA and Jefferson County Schools website. As far as a breakdown of numbers, for middle school, Charlestown Middle School has 17 JVA students. Harpers Ferry, 16. Shepherdstown Middle, 10. Wildwood Middle, 5, for a total of 48 middle school students currently. In the high school, Jefferson has full-time 105 students and 128 hybrid students. Washington has 108 full-time students and 115 hybrid students for a total of 456. Who are the roles in JVA? Students with social-emotional challenges, students that struggle in the physical school environment, students with chronic medical concerns, students that thrive in their home environment, students and families that excel with a flexible schedule, students that may otherwise un-enroll from our schools, students who are enrolled at a half-day Rumsey, we have 20 students that are in JVA in that situation, students taking dual-credit courses, and students approve for early graduation. So, why sign up for a hybrid JVA class? Students that are in brick-and-mortar in high school for a full day of classes can sign up for a hybrid class. And they do this for a variety of reasons. They might not have enough room in their schedule. They might be taking more than seven classes through a hybrid class. There might be the new graduation requirement of personal finance. Some students want to get in JVA for that. That provides a flexible option with the explosion of dual enrollment. Their school does not offer the course. We do offer some of those through JVA. And also, it does serve as enrichment for homeschool students. JVA does serve as an intervention. This is deeply in chronic attendance. JVA helps with JCS attendance percentages and typically decreases students' chronic attendance rate. And I have some numbers on the next slide to speak to that. It also serves an alternative to expulsion, a student with chronic medical concerns that we discussed, a student with social-emotional challenges, and a student that may have physical challenges navigating a brick-and-mortar setting. Some attendance information per JCS county goals. JVA is operated under the premise of defining chronic absenteeism, which has been a goal of the whole county and Mr. Brown and his department. And JVA is focused on bubble students and those in danger of being chronically absent, which is addressed by letters going home. So, if you look at students on the bubble, Jefferson High School students in JVA, there was 22 students in danger of being chronically absent. Only two of those have fallen in that mark. And Washington High School is 24, and only three of their students have fallen under that mark in middle school. JVA as a whole, we were able to keep three out of the four under that mark. The average grades by subject for JVA, English 80%, Math 84%, Science 87%, Social Studies 86%, World Language 89%, and Electives 87%. As of the end of semester one, 473 active students. We have 1,775 course enrollments. The average time logged into Edge Annuity, which is our learning platform, is two hours per course per week. And that does not include any time that the student wasn't logged in, that they were spending on that coursework. 76% is the average reported grade, 83% of successful enrollment completion. And unsuccessful completions include drops and failures are under 10%. Do you have any questions?
I have some questions. What's the average length of time a student is at the OLC?
The average length of time is a semester.
Okay. And the, the GED program, that's separate from the adult ed program?
Yes.
So, for the JVA, what's the average length that a, a student is there?
The average length that the student is enrolled in JVA? I don't have that number. I can get that for you. It's kind of all over the map. It's, it kind of depends if we're including the hybrid students. The hybrid is usually a year.
Right. So, I mean, if they're there for a year, that gives time for, to get test results. That's why I'm asking. Because there, I asked this last year, there doesn't seem to be any accountability with the, the virtual JVA. How, how do these students' test scores compare? Are they learning? Are we testing these students the same way as the, the students in the brick-and-mortar?
Yeah, they took the SAT, the SAT window closed Friday, and they're currently doing the WBGSA testing this week. So, I can get those numbers for you after we get those results back, yes. What's a little bit tricky about that is all of the students, they're not, they're enrolled in their homeschool, according to we've-
But you're able to get the attendance, too, so-
Sure.
I mean, it just seems that, because it just would help to see something. Because when we hear from the other schools, we see, you know, how the students compare with their test scores and their attendance. And we rarely ever hear about the JVA or OLC.
Sure.
All of these classes are purchased from this one company? Is that what it is?
Yes, Edge Annuity.
And is that like West Virginia State-approved or aligned with curriculum?
It is aligned with West Virginia standards, yes. It's not a West Virginia-specific program, no, it's a national program, but it is aligned with West Virginia. And all the students have a West Virginia-certified teacher.
I, I just don't remember, did the board approve that curriculum or anything? I just don't remember it.
That would have been prior to my, or Mr. Hillman's time here, so we could find out for you. But Edge Annuity was already in place here prior to our starting.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of quick questions-
Sure.
For presenting. On slide six, you talk about the connections for OLC, and you talk about how the breaks are earned. What if they don't earn them? What do they do?
They just have additional time with a teacher on that instruction. So, they're, they're kind of, you know-
Punitive or-
No, they're not punitive. They just get additional support instruction-wise.
Okay. Sounds good. And then I wanted to know, on slide 14, talking about JVA, sorry, I'm trying to get there. Okay, so talking about JVA, can you help me understand that chart a little bit better? Because the way it looks to me, and I'm not sure that I'm reading it correctly, is that, for example, at Jefferson High School, there were 22 students that were in danger of being chronically absent, and 20 still stay that way? So, this is not a successful intervention tool?
No. Good question. So, so 22 are almost reaching that chronic absentee, so we are, we are putting them on the bubble. And 20 are still under that chronic absentee mark. So, two have been not successful.
Good. I'm, I thought I was reading it wrong.
Me, too.
And then the difference between slides 15 and 16, I wanted to ask you about that. So, you outlined the average grades by subject on slide 15, and they are all between 80 and 89%. But then on slide 16, you talk about, the fourth bullet point down, says that 76% is the average reported grade.
Yeah. So, we have some other courses that aren't on pit, on slide 15. So, some of those other courses, like PE Health, and some of those, we didn't include on that slide. So, when we added all of those up, we got an average of 76.
Yeah, it seems like some of those other ones that are really pulling that average down.
Yeah.
I'm glad that the key ones are-
The cooler ones are higher. Some of our electives, for whatever reason, tend to be lower in JVA.
Okay. Interesting. Great. Thank you.
I would just ask, maybe as we go forward in the next, you know, coming years. I know, I think last year maybe that we had the same data as far as like the 83% of successful enrollment completion. I don't remember what the percentage was. Maybe after next year, we'll have three good years of data post-COVID. And I know, as you said, there's a lot of students who take advantage of this, and it's very helpful for lots of different reasons. So, to maybe kind of trend that and see if there's changes that need to be made based on what the success is in there and, you know, how the kids do based on what the subject is as well.
Sure.
It'd be helpful and kind of start tracking some of that. I'm sure you do. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Are we just using Edge Annuity? Are we still using West Virginia Learns to supplement things?
Just, just Edge Annuity.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to unfinished business, we have discussion and possible action on remaining 2,000 program Neola policies.
The series 2,000 policies were presented to you on March 24th. The request was that they put, be put out for public comment. No public comments were received, so I'm asking you to approve series 2,000 policies that are before you this evening.
And you're referencing the 2120 list?
That is correct, yes.
All right.
Do you like me to read them all?
Oh, I can get it.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the Neola policies? 2120, 2120.01, 2220, 2230, 2230.01, 2230.02, 2230.06, 2240, 2271, 2312, 2371, 2411, 2412, 2430.02, 2451, 2452, 2460, 2520, 2600, 2623, 2623.01. Is there a motion to approve those Neola policies?
So am I.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Twyper. Any discussion?
Yeah, questions, 2271, dual-credit. I have page 28, but it's in the green where it says student eligibility. It says overall cumulative grade point average of the higher learning institution. I don't know what that means for a student to be eligible.
What page are you on?
I mean, I'm, on this computer, it's page 28, but it's 2271, dual-credit.
Okay. I'm, I'm with. And you said it's in the green section?
Student eligibility.
Okay, I'm with you.
And the following criteria must be met for eligibility. And the first one doesn't have any meaning to me. I, I don't know if I'm missing something. What does that mean, overall cumulative grade point average of the higher learning institution?
I'm read, hold on. I'm sorry. I'm just reading to, to get the context.
That may be, like, if it's a Blue Ridge class or a Shepherd's-
Correct.
They have their own-
That is correct. Yeah, they have their own GPA, their own calculation of that grade point average.
Does the cumulative part mean that if they're taking multiple dual enrollment, that they have to be succeeding at both or all three or half of the money?
Correct. Let me get some clarification on that. Let's pull that one, if you don't mind. 2271.
And just on that same topic, it says that if a student isn't accepted, they can appeal. But there's no direction for students or families as to how they might appeal?
We have a long list of administrative guidelines that we have to write that accompany these policies. So, part of that appeal process would be outlined.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Ms. Skinner, if we could pull 2271 until I can get clarification on that one, please.
All right. Ms. Ogden, would you mind revising your motion to remove 2271?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the Neola policies, 2120, 2120.01, 2220, 2230, 2230.01, 2230.02, 2230.06, 2240, 2312, 2371, 2411, 2412, 2430.02, 2451, 2452, 2460, 2520, 2600, 2623, and 2623, 2623.01. All in favor of that, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and possible action on the 5,000 students Neola policies.
This stack that you've had a chance to look at this over the last few weeks, I guess nearly a month now, they were also put out on March 25th for public comment. No public comments were received. This represents approximately one-half of the series 5,000 policies. And I'm requesting that you approve this section of them this evening.
And this is the list starting with 5111.02?
That is correct.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the 5,000 students Neola policies? 5111.02, 5112, 5114, 5130, 5131, 5136.01, 5140, 5215, 5223, 5230, 5420, 5430, 5451, 5460.01, 5464, 5512, 5513, 5514, 5515, 5516, 5517, 5517.03, 5605, 5610.02, 5610.04, 5630, 5710, 5724, 5771, 5820, 5830, 5855, 5860, 5880, 5885, and 5895. Is there a motion to approve those? Is there a motion to approve those Neola policies? Is there a motion to approve those Neola policies?
So move. So move.
Thank you, Ms. Twyper. Thank you, Ms. Twyper. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Any discussion or questions? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving Neola policies? Hearing none, all in favor of approving Neola policies? 5111.02, 5112, 5114, 5130, 5131, 5136.01, 5140, 5215, 5223, 5230, 5420, 5430, 5451, 5460.01, 5464, 5512, 5513, 5514, 5515, 5516, 5517, 5517.03, 5605, 5610.02, 5610.04, 5630, 5710, 5724, 5771, 5820, 5830, 5855, 5860, 5880, 5885, and 5895. All in favor of those policies, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, thank you. Next, we have new business discussion and possible action on the pre-K calendar.
Ms. Lynn, is she here? Thought I saw her back there. So you have a, on Ms. Lynn's way up here, you have a pre-K calendar. A few of the dates on here are different than the previous calendar that you adopted in terms of some of the breaks and so forth, so.
It's not working. You tried to put it on, maybe it's turned off.
How to do this? Okay, how's that? Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Bishop. What was your question?
Just the pre-K calendar. Any differences that are different from our regularly adopted calendar?
No, I aligned the dates on the pre-K calendar with the calendar that with Mr. Brown. And we put in our professional learning days for pre-K teachers. We have to have so many minutes according to policy. So we had that all done up so that you could approve it so that we could give it to our families who are now registering for pre-K.
So we request your approval of pre-K calendar.
And the pre-K calendar, since it's following the regular calendar, we don't need to do anything with the special hearings or things like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Is there a motion to approve the proposed pre-K calendar?
Tim.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the pre-K calendar, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussion and possible action on pre-K curriculum adoption.
All right, good evening. My name is Jamie Blake, and I'm a pre-K teacher in the county and part of the committee that looked at different curriculums that we may be providing to our pre-K population. All right, so I've already introduced myself, but I'll let everyone else introduce themselves.
Just one second, Jamie. Do we have the PowerPoint?
I don't think I was supposed to go first, so that's why we're a little confused. I'm so sorry. Could you please bring up the adoption materials PowerPoint?
I think they were prepared for it all to be together, the social studies adoption and the pre-K. Adoptions are on the same PowerPoint to be presented tonight. So both adoptions. And that's, right now they're trying to decide who's going to go first. We will do whichever comes up first on the PowerPoint.
Social studies.
Just kidding, we're.
All right, so we have discussion and possible action on the social studies instructional materials adoption to be placed out for public comment.
Good evening. Yes, we are coming before you tonight to ask that you put out for public comment the instructional materials for social studies. Just as a reference, this will begin for the beginning of next school year and will be the instructional materials for a five-year cycle. It used to be six years, but the state recently updated that policy. Next slide, please. You can see in the PowerPoint, this is where pre-K and social studies is combined. Those are the recommended adoption materials. You will notice that as we get into secondary, a lot of the vendors are different per grade level, per content of social studies, because the history changes so much that some vendors are stronger in certain areas than others. Next slide, please. High school is quite a robust list there for your viewing. Next slide, please. These are our committee members. First and foremost, I want to thank the teachers that are here tonight. And if they can just stand to be recognized for their time. If you were part of the committee, will you stand, please? I can speak for all committees. They spent numerous times after work. They spent numerous times after work that they gave other time away from their families. And so we are extremely appreciative of all you've done. As a reminder, the instructional materials are 100% teacher chosen. So they are able to choose exactly what they would like to use. Next slide, please. These are the five non-negotiables. So every instructional material mentioned here tonight have met these five criterias. The state of West Virginia, we have to teach content standards. Every material that we are asking for public comment tonight have met these five negotiables. And they also meet the minimal requirement of covering at least 80% of the standards. Again, teachers teach standards, not curriculum. The curriculum is just a resource to make sure that what the state is asking us to teach, we are actually teaching. I say this every time I stand before you, but the greatest resource that we have is the teacher in front of our students. Great, great teachers do great things. And so again, this is just what they can use to make sure that they are covering the standards that the state is asking us to teach. Next slide, please. And so now I'll ask pre-K to come up and just give you some of the reasons of why they are asking for their recommendation.
Thank you. Sorry, I went ahead of time, but pre-K is where it all starts. So we're kind of used to being at the forefront. So we are proposing the creative curriculum. We were looking for a whole child approach where it's just not focused on one, one aspect. The studies that the children help to choose are hands-on and play-based. There is guidance for individualization in all the activities and the data that we collect. There is a social and emotional development aspect to the program. And it has a robust formative assessment component that the teachers can utilize using this program.
Next slide, please. And I believe now our K5 representative will come up and talk about why they are asking for recommendations.
For K5, we're looking at exploring social studies, West Virginia. Our reasons include it is inquiry-based, which gives the students many opportunities to explore using the framework of asking questions, investigating, finding evidence, and finally communicating ideas. It is also interdisciplinary literacy integration in the new, new West Virginia book. And it includes the science of reading, including things like word study, vocabulary exploration, fluency practice, and lots of writing. It has an emphasis on real-world applications. So it gets things through to students so that they can then apply them in their real life. It is flexible and engaging lessons, both for the students and the teachers. So they have a lot of resources and a variety of ways they can teach, including primary sources, small readers, digital resources, readers theater, and group projects. And to go along with that is the project-based learning style. So students can show what they can do and have some choice in their learning.
Middle school will be next.
Good evening. Middle school social studies teachers build on similar skills in civics, economics, geography, and history. But we teach very different content at each of the grade levels. Thus, our committee has carefully selected three different textbooks that each align with that grade standards. But at the center of each of these choices are these elements, engaging lessons. Foremost, educators need engaging content for our students. These print and online sources provide intriguing images, video, text, and interactive activities, easy-to-understand organization and navigation, and stories and ideas that connect students to their learning in a way that makes material relevant to their lives. Multiple assessment opportunities throughout these materials, formative and summative assessments are provided in print or online. Teachers can build assessments, allowing them to modify the number and type of questions. The products that we're recommending also include countless projects and inquiry-based activities that allow students to show what they know in different and personal ways. Interactive mapping for students, all of our texts have interactive mapping features which bring geolocation to life in a way that 21st century citizenship demands. Our seventh grade in particular will be working with new standards next school year that will emphasize geography and GIS technology. And our National Geographic digital tools will allow students to complete assignments on or create projects in a three-dimensional mapping environment. Dynamic online presence with each textbook system that we've chosen. Students can complete work with the print book or online. If a student is absent or homebound, they won't fall behind. In many cases, a student can even complete their work through an app without internet access, and that work will automatically upload when they log in at school. Abundant teacher resources. This is an exciting year for our social studies team. Our eighth grade West Virginia history teachers in particular have selected a program that will provide more standards-aligned resources than have ever been available to them before. With the textbook that we chose for seventh grade, every single lesson, every day has an out-of-your-seat interactive component. The sixth grade teachers will have a new ability to collaborate with our English teachers using Writeable, which is a software that the students are already familiar with that they can use to enhance their students' reading and writing skills. These are just a few examples. Thank you for letting me share a little bit about our middle school recommendations.
And I believe high school is next.
Good evening. For high school, we have a variety of different subjects, AP classes and electives. And for all of the textbooks we are recommending, there are five core reasons as to why. First, they all have real-world activities. So they have lessons that are interactive. They have students engage with the material and make it relevant for their lives. The McGraw-Hill Company in particular, we have current events students can access and relate to the content they're studying. There's also an overview of different career opportunities for them. They can investigate after high school. They really just engage the students, the textbooks, with the material and make it relevant for their lives. Second, there is an inquiry format for our students with these books. They have students investigate the historical subjects that they're studying, provide some more conceptual understanding for them. All of the textbooks we are recommending go through and provide contextualization background for the students. And then go through and learn the topic. And each chapter provides activities that allow them to analyze, synthesize the material, evaluate the material, and they can apply the material that they have learned. There's also a variety of primary and secondary sources for all of the books, as well as interactive maps and videos. Number three, there's all the resources can integrate easily with Canvas for our OMS. So it's really helpful for that. Number four, all of the textbooks provide the teachers with editable pacing guides and lesson plans. There's a lot of materials available for teachers, including PowerPoint presentations they can download and use, various activities as well. The AP books we are recommending all have DBQs, practice tests, and align very well with the college board's course and exam guides. And then finally, number five, all materials we are recommending in textbooks are also available in Spanish. So the resources, assessments, lessons all also have a Spanish component. And for the eBooks, they can be translated into over 120 different languages. So that provides us the ability to reach those students that we need to. So overall, we believe these are the best recommendations for our students. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
So at this time, just again, we are asking that we put these materials out for public comment for the next two weeks, and then we will come back and ask for approval for adoption. Furthermore, there will be a group of educators who will attend the standard rollout for social studies in Morgantown the last week of June. So that will furthermore understand kind of the alignment of the standards. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is it safe to say that personal finance is no longer a part of the social studies curriculum?
Yes, I don't want to speak for high school, but yes. That is correct. It's a separate, it's a separate class.
But not under?
It is under, it is not under social studies, no. They removed that when they made it a graduation requirement.
I didn't get what you.
They removed that when they made it a graduation requirement. They took it out of social studies.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is it, though?
I believe in CTE, it's its own separate class.
Would these books be purchased, like actual books? Do students get a book, all students, or is there just a class set? What's the plan?
It kind of differs through programmatic levels. I know secondary, we are looking at class sets, but also purchasing extras for those students who possibly like in their IEP need the book to take home. Elementary. Each, each student will get a book in elementary.
Each student will.
Will get a book in elementary, yes. Every student, one book, yes.
It is so hard to hear what.
No, that's okay.
I can't see because of the lighting, and so I can't read your lips. So then it's 10 times harder. The last thing, I appreciate that the older level books, high school level, are available in Spanish. Is that true for the other levels?
And that has become, yes, a normal accommodation for almost every vendor. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And just so the public knows, we will have these out during eight to four work hours, but we'll also have two evenings, the first week on Tuesday. We'll have a time from five to six for those people who can't get there between eight and four. And then the second week, I believe, sorry, first week on Wednesday, second week on Tuesday from five to six. So there are after hours available.
So the one question I had, Mr. Walters already answered about the AP. I was thankful to hear that from a very successful AP teacher who is very beloved and teaches multiple classes. So the fact that they have what you need for that, I appreciate. The other question I had was regarding eighth grade West Virginia history. Because I heard sixth and seventh, but I didn't hear a lot of mention about the eighth grade book and how it actually doesn't even meet the content standards. I mean.
So this year, for the first time, we actually had three vendors who bid on West Virginia history. From ever since I've been here, there's only been one company that's made a West Virginia history book. So no, we had three vendors who did West Virginia history. So they actually had choices. And I believe the teachers are very thrilled that it aligns 100% with the standards. They have online resources. So yes, eighth grade is thrilled that they had choices this year.
Well, it's still have the same resources as the other books?
Yes, still online, still hard copy, still have teacher resources. Yes, we're very pleased that vendors have done some West Virginia history. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on the presentation?
So mine is not a question, but I just wanted to say this is super impressive. The fact that so many of you showed up to be here today to show off the hard work that you did. I think that is amazing. And I think tonight, between seeing what you all put together and seeing you all here to support each other in this, and then having the social studies fair student recognitions today and seeing the hard work that you've put into those, excuse me, to those students come to fruition. And then my own personal insider knowledge on this year's golden horseshoe. I am just super, super happy about everything that's going on in social studies this year. So thank you, guys. So thank you, guys.
At first, I thought I was a little confused on how many people thought that the Neola policies were so captivating, but now I understand. So, but thank you very much. Let's go ahead and take these one at a time. First, is there a motion to, for action to put the pre-K curriculum adoption out for public comment?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Twyford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of putting the pre-K curriculum out for public comment, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Next, we have possible action on social studies instructional material adoption. Is there a motion to put the proposed social studies instructional materials out for public comment?
So move.
Was that you, Ms. Twyford? Thank you, Ms. Twyford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of putting the social studies instructional materials out for public comment, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Now back to Neola policies. You guys run home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We shouldn't have put these last, then more people would have stuck around. You have before you this evening, and the request is that these be placed out for public comment for the next two weeks. This is the second section, if you will, of the 5,000 series policies. And again, the request is that they be placed out for public comment for the next two weeks.
All right. Is there a motion to put out the following Neola policies out for public comment? Policy 5111, 5111.03, 5113, 5113.01, 5113.02, 5120, 5136, 5310, 5320, 5321, 5330, 5331, 5335, 5335.01, 5340, 5341, 5350, 5410, 5421, 5460, 5461, 5511, 5517.01, 5530.02, 5531, 5531.01, 5540, 5600, 5611, 5630.01, 5722, 5772, and 5780. Is there a motion to put those out for public comment?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of putting out the following Neola policies for public comment? 5111, 5111.03, 5113, 5113.01, 5113.02, 5120, 5136, 5310, 5320, 5321, 5330, 5331, 5335, 5335.01, 5340, 5341, 5350, 5410, 5421, 5460, 5461, 5511, 5517.01, 5530.02, 5531, 5531.01, 5540, 5600, 5611, 5630.01, 5722, 5772, and 5780. All in favor of putting those out for public comment, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you very much. And before I was done with that list, they're all gone. Next, we have board member comments and committee reports. Ms. Ogden?
I would just say congratulations to the people who recognize the teachers and staff that were recognized earlier. I can honestly say that my children have benefited from them personally. I'd also say, you know, I know we recognize all of these clubs and students each week, but it doesn't go unnoticed that you can't have a club unless you have an advisor. And it takes more time and more dedication from staff and personnel to be able to, to give of themselves to support the students. Sometimes travel, sometimes other things. It's very, very difficult sometimes for students to get those, those sponsors. So for those of them that stand up and do that, I just want to make sure to say thank you. And for the leadership of the students, it's just, it's very impressive to see, not only do they try to serve their communities here, but they're reaching for those state-level positions, which is really fun to see. So that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Joy?
So on the agenda tonight was the retirement of Rory Benjamin, Harper's Ferry Middle School teacher. And during his tenure at Harper's Ferry Middle School, he also coached football, basketball track, served as athletic director, and he's an asset to the school. Last month, we approved the retirement of Harper's Ferry Middle School band director, Charles Wall. Harper's Ferry Middle School is losing two retirement, two longtime teachers who've worked at the school for over 20 years. An additional note, both men graduated from Jefferson High School together and attended or got jobs at Harper's Ferry Middle School together. So Harper's Ferry Middle and Jefferson County are losing two dedicated, long-term employees. I also wanted to thank all the, everyone who came out to support their coworkers. I know that there are serious concerns about staffing, and there are some cuts that I know are required by law to give notice, those kinds of things. So I hope that anyone that's in that situation gets the correct information about how the system works. I don't know if that makes sense, but if you have questions, please reach out to Dr. Bishop or the union reps. But there are certain state laws that require that employees be told when there is no clear funding stream. So I, I just, it's heartbreaking to lose any employees. But I'm not good with words, so I'll stop.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton.
Thank you. I just would like to follow what Ms. Lori Ogden said. To congratulate everyone who was recognized this evening, also want to congratulate any teams that may have, over the, the last month while we were out, if you've made it to states and/or if you won states or whatever the situation is. Also, to congratulate all of our seniors who are now committing to different colleges. Just so proud of each and every one of you. And I would also just like to thank our coaches in this area, because right now, we have, we have community members who are coaches for our AAU teams, and they're traveling, they volunteer, they're volunteering with our students. So thank you, each and every one of you, for everything that you do. And because not only are you coaches, you're also mentors to our children. So, and thank you to all of our staff for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Twyford.
So I'm going to read so that I don't get choked up. Dear Jefferson County residents, JCS staff and board members, it is with a heavy heart that I announce my resignation from the Jefferson County Schools Board of Education effective June 2, 2025. I have accepted a promotion with my company, and I'm relocating to the Pacific Northwest. It has been an absolute pleasure to serve the students, teachers, staff, and residents of Jefferson County, West Virginia, as vice president of the Jefferson County School Board for the last year. I am so proud to have been able to champion many of you and your excellent place in our school system. My experience on the board has been both insightful and productive. To my constituents, you are the reason I decided to step up and serve. It has been so rewarding to hear from you and learn from you. I have loved being a voice for you and making decisions that represent your desires. Please get involved in our county and be part of creating a bright future. You really can make a difference. To the JCS staff, you have been through so many changes and no doubt have more on the horizon. You have great vision and skills to see it through. As a family, we've had the pleasure of working with so many of you, and we will treasure those memories. I will miss working with you, and I'll always be invested in your success. To my fellow board members and to Superintendent Bishop, you have the potential to be such an amazing force in this county. Please learn to see the value in each other. Put aside any personal agendas and find a path forward, negating the past and focusing what on, on what is most important, which is our students. My wish for your continued leadership of Jefferson County Schools is greater unity and prosperity. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, and I'm sorry it has to be cut short.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Bishop, do you have any comments this evening?
No, I don't, I don't have anything.
All right. And we do have an executive session this evening?
Yes, we have the need for executive session.
And it's for discussion and possible action on real estate, personnel action hearings, and transfer hearings, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session for possible action on real estate, personnel action hearings, and transfer hearings?
I motion it.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. All in favor of going to executive session, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, tomorrow's Tuesday. We don't have a track at tonight. No, it's right. It's Wednesday. Yeah, Wednesday's ROTC. Yeah. Tomorrow's tutoring for Sam, two little kid and something else. Oh, and then she has an appointment. And then Thursday is something else with school. Friday is track meet and tanning appointment for prom on Saturday. Did I go? Oh, yeah. Last Friday. Yeah, that was ridiculous.
All right. Thank you very much for your patience. Is there a motion to go back into open session? Some of. Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Twyford. All in favor of returning to open session, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's recommendation to place Carol Whittington on the transfer list, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Next, we have, is there a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation? Not dark in here, hang on. To place Jennifer Fagans on the transfer list. Is there a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to place Jennifer Fagans on the transfer list? Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bratton. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's recommendation to place Carol, Jennifer Fagans on the transfer list, say aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Motion passes for one. Is there a motion to uphold the superintendent superintendent's recommendation to place Veronica Babington on the transfer list? Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bratton. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's recommendation to place Veronica Babington on the transfer list, say aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Thank you. Is there a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to place April Thomas on the transfer list?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Twyford. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's recommendation to place April Thomas on the transfer list, say aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Is there a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to place Margaret Hart on the transfer list? Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Twyford. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's recommendation to place Margaret Hart on the transfer list, say aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Is there a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to place Rebecca Rhodes on the transfer list?
Aye, I may.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Ogden. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's recommendation to place Rebecca Rhodes on the transfer list, say aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Is there a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to place Trudy Kahler on the transfer list? Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Twyford. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's recommendation to place Truli Kahler on the transfer list, say aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Thank you. Is there a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to place Karen Hartlove? Karen Hartlove on the transfer list? Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Twyford. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's recommendation to place Karen Hartlove on the transfer list, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Thank you. And these are positions that are federally funded, and that's why they're on the transfer list. So I hope you understand that, that it's not just a choice. It's a necessary evil. So, all right, next up, we have.
And I just wanted to say, you know, thank you all for meeting with us and allowing us to start the process so that we can hopefully fix it.
Hopefully find the funding that we need to keep you where you are.
Because you all do a fantastic job.
Yeah.
All right. Is there a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation for termination of Felicia Herr, a CTMS cook?
Some of.
Thank you, Ms. Twyford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's recommendation for termination of Felicia Herr, a CTMS cook, say aye.
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 Oppose? Thank you. Is there a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation for termination of Paula Pear, a CTMS cook?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Twyford. All in favor of upholding the superintendent's recommendation for termination of Paula Pear, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Thank you very much. And 10:39, meeting adjourned.